Welcome, everybody, first of all. I don't think we have any need for introductions. Everybody knows each other here, so just welcome and hope you've been enjoying the webinars that have been out there. Our first on the agenda, Chris, hopefully you're ready with the member showcase. Sorry, I meant to give you a warning.
You mean the favorite photo?
Yes, the favorite photo thing.
Hopefully, I'm ready.
Shelley Barclay. I chose this photo because of the detail. The beaver at Liz Hall Wetlands was super friendly and photogenic. I could have stayed all afternoon and made friends with him. Ruth Ryder. After many years, I finally purchased my first camera. I was excited to capture this eagle on my first time out. Yes, it was a very lucky shot.
This is one of my favorite images from last year, 2021. It's of my daughter Natalie and my wife Fran running in on the Violet Tendencies Trail in Six Mile Cooley. It's kind of special because it's got great light, great colors on their clothing, and shows action and shows what my family does. We run.
Michael Dimnick. This photo is special to me as I seldom take landscape photos, but I was inspired to do so after various discussions at the photo club meetings, including one dealing with photo merging. I spent a glorious morning at the Japanese gardens last year, experimenting with various camera techniques and later at home with photo merging. This photo is one of the results. I used Photoshop elements to do my photo editing, but I didn't adjust the saturation levels of the photos. The fall colors were intense enough. Mike Banchuski. I chose this image because it was taken at a location that always brings me great joy. The Vermillion Lakes, just on the edge of the Banff Townsite, always seem to inspire my photographic thirst. During my lifetime, I've had the privilege of spending maybe forty sunrises, prowling the three lakes, trying to capture nature's splendor as it unfolds before my eyes. Lorelei. I've chosen this picture because it is the last picture of the day for the last wedding that I plan to shoot after twenty-four years. Such a hard decision to make, but now that some time has passed, I'm glad I made that decision. It's also a reminder of the pandemic and how it changed things because the groom was sick with COVID shortly after the wedding. Judy Gunlock. My little twin grandbabies were born in January in Ontario, but because of COVID, I wasn't able to fly out there to meet them until June. This is my son Brent and his twins Amelia and Everett. Every time I look at the photos, I'm filled with joy. Unfortunately, I didn't get a good shot of both babies together, so I made a composite. This is Cat Clement. This is a picture of my youngest child, Josh's youngest child, five-year-old Frances Amelia, or FE, as her daddy affectionately calls her. This isn't just a picture of a child joyfully playing in the leaves. Nana was joyful that she could be there to take the picture in a park across the street from where the family is living in Rome, New York State. Frances's daddy is a lieutenant colonel in the RCA F and currently part of the Canadian contingent in the Eastern Division of NORAD. Located in Rome, my husband John and I flew there to visit in early November 2021 after having not seen them for two years. My heart aches that I don't get to see Josh and his wife Allison and their five children as much as I like to, so I try to savor every moment when I visit. And yes, I try to take as many pictures as I can. I was in the park with Frances and her ten-year-old sister Marjorie and asked them to start throwing leaves in the air, trying different spots and different shots. Marjorie soon got tired of the whole thing and wandered back home, telling her mom and dad that Nana was making us throw leaves in the park. She was probably implying that clearly Nana had lost her mind. Marjorie might have been bored with the whole thing, but Frances just kept enthusiastically throwing the leaves for Nana. Ah, that's what I love about five-year-olds. Out of the several shots that I took, this is the one I liked the very best. A little bittersweet, but it still brings up happy memories when I look at it. And so it's joyful to me.
Is this my best photo from last year? I'm not sure, but it is different. I usually process my black and white images in a traditional way, white-whites and black-blacks, sort of following the traditional S curve, if you will. This one, I pushed the blacks far to the right. I was going for that wispy look on a very familiar scene. And I think I achieved it with this one.
George Clayton. Two reasons why this was a memorable photo for me. First, it's harder to get out with my friend and fellow photographer Chi Chang as Jeannie, his wife, recently had knee replacement. They are both approaching eighty, and my time with the Masetra Joy went out photographing. We took Jeannie with us as she enjoys both the full moon and sunsets. Secondly, Lexi reached out on Facebook and wanted to purchase a canvas print for the lobby of the building in the photo. I gave her the image and LA Gallery printed it for cost, so the retirees who can't get out can enjoy the view within the view. Trevor Page. The Canadian Food Grains Bank, 2021 Food Drive at Picture Butte. Harvesting grain in North America will be totally driven by AI before the decade is out. Doug Petru. This is one of my favorite photos of 2021 because I love the lighting so much. I was experimenting with long exposures using an ND filter, and although I saw something in this scene originally, the final result was better than I expected. The lighting in the water picks up the line of the water very well, in my opinion, and the light in the tree in the foreground adds to the photo. A bigger surprise to me was the very little light room editing necessary to achieve this result. Chris Oates. I have often tried to take pictures of a Baltimore Oriole. I always find that they're elusive and stick to the high branches and trees. On a camping trip to Little Bow Park, there were many Orioles in the treetops around us, and so I got a few good shots. Then, one day, I saw one swoop down to some bushes near our campsite. I ran to the spot and got a few good shots, and then, as he was leaving, got this one of the Oriole inflate. Although it's not tack sharp, it was one of my favorite shots. Donna Kruger. Except for all the noise, this photo turned out just the way I had in mind. I love the warm complementary colors that the morning light brings, and I wanted to be able to freeze the action when the wings were spread and balanced and the neck was straight. I also love the detail and texture of the feathers and the ripples in the water. My patience and one two-thousandth of a second aligned. Denise. The newest hiker is my favorite photo from 2021. This little guy, only just two on this very day, was enthusiastic about his first hike ever. He enjoyed looking at the flora and fauna as he encountered and smiled the whole way. He walked about half the hike, then took a ride in his dad's backpack, where naptime took over the last little bit of the hike before playtime in the mountain lake. Byron Lee, Leaves on the Line. I wanted an image that represented the colors of fall in a different perspective. I liked the vibrancy of the colors of the autumn leaves. The blue sky provided a nice backdrop with the thin cloud cover, providing an extra element in contrast. The simplicity of the image is something that I also really liked. Branny. What I like about this picture is that it doesn't need much explanation. Whenever I look at it, it reminds me my daughter's excitement, innocence, and pure joy she felt the night before Christmas. Bev Weeb. We had an opportunity to take our grandchildren to beyond Van Gogh last August. What a great adventure that was for them to see such a great display.
This image really stood out for me because I love the mood of it and the fact that the deer was looking right at me. She was so interested in what I was doing. We were out walking the dogs at Indian Battle Park as we lost the sun when we came across some deer. Of course, I had my camera with me and my zoom lens, so I had Scott take the dogs, and I followed the deer and took a bunch of shots. I was really happy with the lighting, and I just love the glow of twilight, and that's what really made this a favorite image of mine.
John Anvik. I chose this photo of my kids standing on top of a table that they made of ice chunks at Lundbrook Falls. I liked the look of pride on my son's face and the smile on my daughter's face. It reminds me of how much fun my kids have exploring and playing with each other while we're out in nature.
That was really great. Thank you, everybody, for submitting to that. And it was really, really good idea. I'm glad, Chris, that you told us we should do this after we saw one of the other clubs do it in the Alliance.
Yeah, I think it's a nice addition.
Yep. So it should be probably posted up in our YouTube channel for anybody else that wants to watch it again. Anybody else got any comments? Kind of in the chats, I guess.
Yeah, I enjoyed doing this, so I encourage that we do it again.
Well, we'll probably get more from the ones that haven't submitted this month and see if we can do another one next month from those ones. And then we'll go on to next year. So we are going to move on, and thank you, Chris, for putting that together. You did, as usual, an amazing job. So our ad segment now is by Bronny, and we chose this ad segment because of our theme next month, which is to take one subject, and that subject, you should take one picture of it with a small aperture and one picture of it with a larger aperture. So one where there's more bokeh or more things not in focus and one where there's more things that are in focus. And we thought to help that along, we'd have a little talk on lenses. So this is Bronny's ad segment.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, my segment, I don't know if it's gonna talk exactly about the next month theme, but hopefully you'll enjoy it anyways. I'm going to share my screen. So if you like me, and I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one enjoying buying new gadgets, you know, lenses especially, there are a few things that you can learn about lenses even before you buy them, before you try them. So you know, you find out what you want to use the lens for, you know, whether it's for landscape portrait or wildlife, whatever it is, and you come up with the idea, what you're looking for. And I was thinking how sometimes we can overlook certain things, and that might be actually helpful, deciding which lens to buy or even choose, you know, when you're going out shooting. So by understanding certain lens specs that are available on, you know, camera store websites or you can just Google them, I think it's quite interesting to find out more about the lens. So obviously, you know, things like focal length and aperture and lens mode. Those are things we understand, but I was gonna focus on a couple other things, and those are the optical design and diaphragm blades. Those are kind of two different ones we, I don't know if any of you, you know, look into. So I thought maybe I'll talk about those and we can learn something new. I definitely learned something new when I was doing this research for tonight. So I was using, for comparison, two lenses. Very simple lenses. One is fifty-millimeter Nikon lens and one is fifty-millimeter Canon lens. And the two specs I wanted to compare, so again, you know, the optical design and the same thing for the Canon lens. Obviously, the one is one-point-eight lens and one is one-point-two, so you can right away tell the difference in price, but is the aperture the only thing that differs? Or is there something else, you know, that makes the lens more special or different in either way? So let's dive into those two specs. So first one is the optical design. I don't wanna make it like super nerdy or boring, but just to explain what they're talking about when they provide you with the specs. So they talk about elements and groups. So the elements are the, there's individual lenses in or individual pieces of glass in the lens, and the groups are the lenses or the pieces of glass put together based on certain correction design. So the purpose of, you know, these groups and elements is to correct for imperfections such as, you know, distortion or chromatic aberration. In other words, you know, improving the sharpness, contrast, and color rendition. So when we comparing, you know, side by side lenses and, you know, let's say one says twelve elements and nine groups, and the other one says fifteen elements and nine groups, the question is, is more better? You know, should I always look for the lens which has more elements and group? Does that, you know, translate into better photos? So as you can tell, you know, the Canon has more elements. The number of groups is the same. So after doing research, I came into conclusion that the elements are often paired up. So it's really the number of groups that gives you a better idea of the number of corrections. So really, when you're comparing optical design, maybe just look at the number of groups rather than elements. And while I was reading more and more about this, I actually came into a conclusion that it doesn't make a huge difference whether there is more. So what's important than the number of elements and groups in the lens is to look for special types of glass and coating. That's actually what makes the lens stand out. So things like, you know, fluorite or coating or extra low dispersion, those are the kind of things that make the lens more valuable and more likely perform better. So when I was looking at the notes for each lens, then I started to read about, you know, the specific type of lenses used. So for example, for the Nikon, you know, they have two spherical elements, two extra-low dispersion, nano-crystal coating. So those are kind of the things you want to look at if, you know, if you're buying a lens and you wanna know if it's gonna deliver better than the average. And for the Canon, kind of the same thing, ultra-low dispersion, they call it, and again, spherical elements to correct aberration. So for the optical design, that was it, just a very simple, very simple thing. Just more than looking at comparing the number of the elements and group, just look for special things about the type of glass and type of coating. Now, the second spec, which is kind of interesting, is diaphragm blades. And so you see two pictures. One shows five-blade lens and one shows eight-blade, round blade. So this is five straight, and this is eight rounded. So what is the difference? Why should we even care about, you know, what kind of blades we have in our lenses? Does it really matter? So the answer is yes, it quite actually matters if you care about your the quality of the background blur, you know, in other words, the bokeh. And also, our thing is, the number of blades also affects the number of rays in a starburst. So let's just talk about the bokeh first. So again, here we are comparing the Nikon versus Canon. The Nikon has nine blades rounded, and the Canon has ten blades. Just to put this in perspective, nine blades is a pretty good number for a lens, and it definitely should be a really good lens for producing nice transition. Both of these lenses should be very nice for producing nice transition in the background for a nice bokeh, and they both have rounded blades. So both of these lenses would be really good for portraits, and the Canon, I would expect, would be even better, should have even better transition and nicer bokeh. That's my conclusion. So again, if you're looking for a nice portrait lens or if you're looking for a lens which should produce nice blurred background, the bokeh, the quality of background, look for lenses which have roughly nine or more blades, and they should be rounded. And the second thing is the number of the blades actually has an effect on the number of rays in the starburst. This was kind of a new thing to me. You probably know this, but the even number of blades will produce the same amount of rays in a starburst. So for example, there's a picture with using eight-bladed lens, and it produces, it produces eight sunrays in the starburst. However, if you use a lens which has odd number of blades, it will produce double of the number of rays. So for example, going from eight to nine, instead of eight rays, you will have nineteen. So again, it's quite a difference. So this is something I actually learned just doing this presentation. So again, here's the conclusion about the blades. For a better bokeh, look for lenses with more blades and round blades. And for starburst, if you like to have more sunrays, look for a lens that has odd number of blades. So for example, in our comparison, you know, the Canon would be probably better lens for portraits, for blurring the background and nicer transitions. But if you like the, if you like a starburst with more rays, probably Nikon would be better option, actually, you know. So if you go out, shoot landscape, and you're deciding which lens to choose, you know, maybe just choose the one which has odd number of blades. So again, just make it very simple, just four things to remember from tonight. So rather than comparing the number of groups and elements, when you're buying lens or doing your research, just look for notes on special type of glasses and coating. More blades usually translates into better bokeh. Round blades are more preferable over straight, and odd number of blades will double the rays in a starburst. And that's everything for me for tonight. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Branny, it also depends on what you're gonna be using the lens for. I'd be, you know, as a landscape photographer, I'd be worried about size and weight, so I'd probably shy away from that fancy Canon.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right. And I didn't want to go kind of over the obvious, like, you know, focal length and weight and whether it has image stabilization. Those are kind of things you have to make your own decision or, you know, how much you're willing to pay, but you're definitely right. You're looking for the right tool for the job. So just like I compared the Canon and Nikon, you know, even the Canon is presumably better lens overall, but let's say if you shoot the landscape with the lens, maybe the Nikon would be better choice. But yeah, you're absolutely right. The weight and size for landscape definitely matters.
Do you wanna take your screen sharing off so we can see when we talk to you? Ronnie? Ronnie, do you wanna stop screen sharing?
Yeah, just a second. Sorry, guys. There you go.
Okay. Better to talk to you this way. Did somebody else start talking there? Any other questions?
Branny, did you come across any explanation why an odd number doubles the number of rays?
I was expecting this question, and I didn't get prepared for this question. I, it has definitely to do with, you know, with the whatever, what's the word I'm looking for, the physics of the lens. But I will look into it, actually. I'm curious just myself, you know, why that extra one blade makes such a big difference in the output.
I'm wondering if it's actually, they both give double, but on an even number, they overlap.
Could be.
I bet that's why. I bet they both go each direction.
That could be it, yeah. As I said, I was expecting this question for sure, and I should have looked for the answer, but I didn't have much time. Yeah, actually.
I bet that's what it does. I have to look into that myself.
Right. But thanks for the question. It's a good question.
Thank you, Bronny.
Thank you.
For all your hard work on that. Our next is a secretive assignment from Judy, so you guys can guess what her assignment is. I've got it on my computer, so I'll see if I can get it going. And if people, I've heard that if you turn off your video, like your face is on the screen, then that helps the uploading and stuff go smoother on any videos that we play. You can all see that?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Awesome, Judy, you're on here somewhere, I hope.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Anybody want to take a guess?
About stairs.
Yeah, that's right, that was it.
There are ways or steps. Nicely done, excellent images.
Thank you.
They highlighted the stairs, but you also had some nice ones where there's some other elements that played into things.
Trying to make it not too obvious.
Nicely done.
Funny story on one of those shots from downtown, I almost I almost got, well, I did get in a little bit of a problem because a homeless person took offense to me shooting shots downtown. Gave me a tongue lashing and then followed me all the way back to my car and I was getting a little nervous anyway.
Are you taking pictures of her?
No, I was like across the street. It was that one at the bus depot downtown. And I was across the street, I was actually just shooting the building. You could see the stairs through the glass, but there were two people standing outside there. But I was way across the street and this guy came up like from behind me. I couldn't even see him approaching me and then, you know.
And he got away safe?
Yeah.
I think in the, yeah, that was, I told you before already that I really love that show and thank you for getting it together. I agree with you. It was obvious and some of it wasn't, I thought they were, it was really beautiful images. Anybody else have any comments, questions? We're whipping through this meeting awful fast.
Just the comment, I agree with Judy, it's much easier, sorry, it's much harder to shoot street photography in Letbridge than any other place I think I've done. Because yeah, just people here are not used to it, you know, we still see those 10 same different, same people downtown all the time, so.
Well, the other problem is there's hardly any people around compared to say Calgary. So you're much more obvious when you're out there with your camera.
Yeah.
At least that's been my experience.
Yeah, that is very true. I got no problem shooting in bigger cities around the world and yeah, Letbridge is always a tough one.
So Trevor did comment in the comments that even blades do count, do in fact overlap the rays. And there's something in the comments, if you want to read his connection there. Our next, we're going to do the theme, I think. John, if you're ready, I'll just, I'll share the images if that's okay.
Yeah, that'll keep things simpler. Yeah, I guess Ray is all ever be, right?
We had a really, really good critique night last night, I guess, two nights ago, I guess, and really enjoyed it. So if anybody can make it out, it's just, it's just really good to come to.
So, sorry. So we had 16 photos this month and the theme being negative space. And just sort of give an overview what's meant by negative space. The idea that negative spaces intend to support the subject and draw attention to it. And this first one, we actually, we have lots of really good examples of the use of negative space. And as I've forgotten who commented that, oh, I think it was George who commented, if you went online, you find just so many different examples of negative space and it can mean lots of different, yeah, there's just lots of different examples. So this first one, the comments that we had, first of all, the brown in the upper right really leads the eye nicely into this photo and leads you right to that subject. Really good exposure, really good depth of field in this. That subject is nice and sharp. Yeah, we thought this was a great image, beautiful picture. Our only real comments on improvement was that the maybe either cloning out or cropping out some of the dark spots on the on the left. Just to sort of bring it a little more to one side or a little less those shadows that are being cast in from outside. But other than that, yeah, we we thought this was a really great start to the theme. Great first photo for the theme. So this was by Donna Krueger. You have any comments, Donna? You should hear.
Yeah, I'm here, yeah, thanks, thanks for that. I don't know, just on one of my hikes and this is what I saw and it reminded me of the theme. So I thought it worked out quite well. I kind of liked the shadows on the left there. I thought it kind of worked with the one, the shadow of the subject.
Yep.
Thank you.
No. So, so we thought, yeah, this was an awesome picture. One of the great examples in this is it's walking with respect to negative spaces, how it's walking into the negative space. And we like the lines, the sort of waves, how they lead you right into, right into the photo, right to the bird. Just an awesome picture. One comment we had, not, that sounds negative, no. Well, one thing we liked is how it's almost a black and white with these little punches of color with the feet, with the blues and the yellows complementing each other. We did, yeah, really strong composition. The only two critiques we might make is, one, we thought the vignette was a bit strong on this. The that could have been pulled back a little bit and maybe darken the breast a little bit. It's just to, because it's so bright, it just keeps drawing the eye right there. This was by Doug Petru. Again, really, really good photo. And Doug, I think, is Doug here to have with some comments?
I'm here, I don't really have much to say about it. Elizabeth Hall, just out, early, I can't remember, I think it was early fall, trying to try to get some shots and I just, I really liked the lighting on this one.
What kind of bird is that? It's looks like a shorebird.
It is a shorebird, I'm not sure the exact, the exact name.
Sandpiper.
Thank you. Okay, move to the next. This one's called watchdog. We, some things we really liked about it is how the road leads you into the photo and right to that subject. And the dog is, the placement is really good for composition. Has a nice shallow depth of field that draws your eye. We thought that, we thought that maybe the dog could have been bigger. That's the, almost the negative space is too much. Wow, well, we felt it was a little too much that if you maybe cropped in a little bit more, maybe cropped a little bit of the sky out, sort of almost at that one third, get that really dark cloud out. And maybe a little off the off the left, really, to really bring out that dog. But yeah, other than that, yeah, that was, we really, yeah, again, we thought it was a really good photo and it's, we're going to come up, just to sort of foreshow, we're going to come up against another one of a dog and we're going to talk a little bit about the difference between them of tension in a photo. But this was by Catherine Clement. And yeah, any comments, Catherine's here?
Oh, yeah, hi. Yeah, well, thanks. Interesting suggestion about making the dog look bigger. And thanks for your comment, Trevor, about, yes, it was windy. Yeah, this is my, out in the country, that's the field road there and the highway off to the south. Yeah, it was fun to go out and do it and of course, the wind started picking up just when I got out there.
Nice. So this one's called Lone Survivor. Yeah, we, we thought this was a really, really good photo, a great exposure, good exposure. There's some really good lines in this that lead your eye right to that subject in the middle. And how the one comment we has, how the frost punches punches that buffalo out. That probably, if this was, well, if it wasn't like a black and white, you probably wouldn't even see the buffalo there, it would kind of get buried in the browns of the hills. Yeah, really nice detail in the ground and how the detail balances the sky. We really liked how, how that worked out. So this was by Gorders. Or any comments?
Not really, but if it looks cold, it was cold that day.
That's right, I think you had commented on, there was lots of horror frost, is that right?
Oh yeah, it was frosty all over and a little bit foggy too, which is a little unusual for this part of the
And Gord, what camera and lens did you use for that image?
You ask hard questions. I think I took my little Fuji out with, I think I had the longer lens, 55 to 200 on it or something like that. Yeah, I was, I was standing up on campus, this was taken at the university. And this statue is just to the south of University Hall.
Marvelous image, you really captured the spirit there.
Actually, the Canon with the 70 to 200 on it.
Okay, I lied. I just grabbed a camera and go out the door, I don't even look at it anymore.
Beautiful picture.
So another excellent photo, an example of use of negative space, how the negative space here provides a nice opposition to the foreground, like the negative space in the background, providing opposition to the, to the foreground. You know, excellent depth of field. One of the things we liked about it is how the pattern in the background, in the darker background, repeats the pattern that you have in the foreground. So there's a nice repetition of shapes or patterns in this photo. Yeah, had really liked this one. And this was by Laurley. I don't know if you have more comments about it?
Not really, I just like the light on the, on the grass in the front. And I knew that the back would appear darker because it was in the shade. I did grab a paintbrush and it was a little bit too detailed in the background. So I grabbed a paintbrush and then told it just to paint over, just to darken the highlights a little bit. So when you do that, it doesn't darken the blacks anymore, it'll just, you know, tone down the highlights a little bit. So that, but you can still, you know, I want to still see that, but just not as much as it was, so.
Wonderful tones.
So again, you know, within the theme, a great use of negative space. One of the things we also really liked about it is how this shows how that rule of third really works in composition of a photo. Yeah, things we really liked about it, that there's an even, even though there's detail around the subject, it's still not distracting and it leads the eye into it. There's this nice halo of the flower that focuses the attention right on that bug. Again, great depth of field here. And we liked how the green, green accents in the background complement or also picked up in the flower itself. How there's kind of a matching there, so we thought that was really nice. So this one was called, if I can read my handwriting right, Mylar Red Beetle in Flower, I don't know if I pronounced that name right. And this is by George. Sorry, and I, why, I didn't get the last name.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't even going to try to butcher your name with my
Yeah, you're in trouble with the name and the bug name.
Hey, yeah, George, any comments?
No, no, nothing, just it is what it is.
Could you tell us how you shot it? Because I think we all found it very interesting that it was handheld and
Oh, it was handheld with my, my camera has the stabilization built into the camera rather than the lens. And it's a high quality macro lens that I'm using. And then when I get back and I work on it post-process, I also, if it works, I'll I'll try to do the auto shake production on it. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. This time, I'm pretty certain it worked okay.
Maybe a little better than okay, I'm seeing hairs on the back, so that's pretty darn good.
I had to get in pretty close to it and the bug, the bug did behave itself for this one. Bees and flies are different, they'll, they'll take off, but beetles are pretty good.
Again, you know, really impressive photo. This, and this one tells a great story. You look at this, you start wondering where the people are from, you know, where the people go that left the boat there. The rope into the water, you know, has a nice lead to it. One of the things we really liked is how sharp and crisp that boat is compared to the softness by the, by the mist and fog around the island. Oh, close, sorry, I'm trying to read my handwriting here, yeah. Unlike the previous photo where we were talking about rural thirds, this one has the subject close to the center, but this really works well in the photo. The only suggestion we really had with this is perhaps, and there was some debate between the people who are in the meeting, that maybe a square crop would be good, just to show, you know, square, have a square crop, show a little bit of the land or just leave it as is. Like I said, there was no consensus on that, but overall, everyone loved this shot. So this is by Denise Nielsen. And comments, Denise?
Um, not really, this was just in a, was on a foggy day, obviously, in Nova Scotia. And I was just driving along the Marine Highway and this was just a scene that was in the bay, in one of the little bays there, so.
Wonderful, thank you. Thanks for sharing it. So again, we felt this was a great image. We really liked the way that it was cropped, the, how the, the sort of portrait, the really narrow crop makes it, makes for this really nice diagonal of the crane pointing up at that top corner. Yeah, great image. Great use of that negative space. This is a really good example of how the negative space supports the subject within the, within the photo. We like the simplicity of it, you know, it's a simple, it's a simple photo, but yet it's a simple photo, but yet it's, it's very engaging, it's very interesting. Really great detail in the crane. Yeah. And this was by Gail Shaw. Is Gail here tonight?
Yep.
And comments?
Uh, I just, uh, it's at the exhibition ground and we just popped out there after the last field trip to Helen Schuler and just thought it looked like a good negative space picture.
Yeah. So this, uh, this particular one is interesting, uh, you know, to the other ones we've seen in that there's two ways you can interpret this as negative space. Um, that either the grid is the subject or the black line, the holes or the, the black line is the subject and you could interpret it either way. Uh, great detail in the photo. Yeah, and it's, it's the type of photo where the viewer chooses what their interpretation of, of it is. And this is, you know, a different interpretation of, of negative space than what we've seen previously. This was by Ian Thompson. Ian, do you have any comments?
Uh, not other than, uh, is purely a thought experiment on negative space, I think. And, and that's really as far as it needs to go, really.
Just, yeah. Compliment, yeah, great detail. That was another, if I didn't say that before, yeah. Okay, so this one's, well, I'm, I'm gonna actually leave the title off for, for a minute. Uh, so when we looked at this, some of us were wondering if there had been a water, like a watercolor filter put over the photo. Um, it kind of has this impressionist effect to it that we thought was, was really neat. Uh, and then we read the title and it says leaves, it's called Leaves Under Slush. And then we were like, wow, that's, that's really cool. Uh, so that, that effect is being given by taking the, uh, photo of the leaves there under some slush. Um, things we really liked about it, angle of the leaves keeps the viewer's eyes in the photo. And how they, they complement each other. Great balance with negative space. In fact, you need that space, uh, in order to, for this photo to work. Really engages the viewer. The hint of color, uh, really, yeah, the hints of color within the negative space really adds to it. And one of the things that this points out or shows, this demonstrates is how negative space doesn't have to be um, bland or blah and, or in order for it to work. They can have texture and, and still support that subject. So this was by our, uh, this is by Sigrid. Did you have any comments, Sigrid?
No, that's, no, I have nothing.
Where'd you take it?
Uh, this was on a field trip that we took to Burmese Lake. And it was kind of a real mixed bag of weather day from a few years ago. And, uh, but there was this puddle that was snow coated around the edges and, um, and then just all the slushy and I'd just seen those leaves and I thought, how cool is that? So that's all this is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So one thing we really liked about this photo is how all the lines in it leads that lead to the subject, to the dog. And, uh, really good D, you know, great detail in the fur and in the grass. The only, the only things we thought that could be improved, one is the sky is blown out in the center. And maybe if the photographer had just angled it a little, angled the camera either down a little bit or up a little bit, but having the dog's head just touch that, that ridge kind of doesn't quite work. But otherwise, yeah, we, it was fun photo of a dog. Uh, so this is by Ralph Arnold. I don't know if Ralph has any more comments.
Yeah, um, this is some morning shot on a run in Six Mile Cooley and the dog actually sat and behaved sort of. It wasn't blowing a billion miles an hour, but to try and get the skies and negative space. And of course, unfortunately I'm shooting into the sun, but I thought, oh, the hell do it anyway. So no, it's happy with it.
Yeah. Great color, certainly great color in the sky. Yeah. So we felt this is another one of those of, uh, within the says, one of those wow pictures are just stunning. Or, or the, some of the comments we had with this. Uh, really like how there's the catchlight in the eyes of the bird, how, and how it's walking into that negative space, like what we saw with the sandpiper earlier. Um, also knowing the negative space between the legs, how that supports the subject in this photo. And, uh, and the symmetry of the reflection as well is really, really nice on this. So this is by Mike.
I took this up near Nobleford. There's a fantastic, uh, kind of slew, uh, just to the north of the town site on gravel road. You can pull your car off to the side and this is taken from the, the window of the car.
Wow.
Um, great time to go, obviously, which is rare is when it's calm because the reflections in the evening are, are really spectacular. So this image has actually been, uh, cropped because it was a bit bigger and then there's little junky things that are like sticking up out of the water or just floating on top of the water. And I had a few of this, this particular bird. Uh, it's just that I chose this one because it had almost nothing, uh, once I cropped it in it, other than the cut reflection of the sky. And I, I thought it really, it really appealed to me just having it completely simple background. And, uh, I thought it fit the category for tonight. So, um, I went up, it's one I'm very pleased with.
Thank you. So yeah, really, really great exposure on the singer in this. Uh, the negative space again frames and supports the subject. And there's an interesting contrast with the light and shadows. Uh, like with his leg kind of sticking out and then it disappears or the back. Uh, we had some discussion on the, on the light flare, whether or not it was too distracting or how it leads the singer. That was sort of the only discussion point we really had on this, but, but yeah, we thought it was again a great photo. Um, oh, I forgot to write, I believe, I forgot to write down the photographer. I believe this.
Irons, I believe.
Iron, yes, thank you. It was by.
Yeah, there's actually more negative space in the original image than what appears here. Cause I actually did, uh, Photoshop in the light flare. I just thought that, uh, for dramatic effect, I thought it just looked a little better to me.
Yeah. Like, like I said, it was, uh, it wasn't something everyone agreed on. Okay, thanks. Okay. So we felt this was a really good photo, but we didn't think it quite fit the theme. We didn't think it quite was quite negative space. And the reason was, is, is actually more having to do with the texture in the tile that we found that that was distracting. It was fighting too much with the plug. This is sort of just too much. We, we weren't really sure what the subject was. Was it the tile? Was it the, the plug? Um, part of, part of the, yeah, part of what we, we struggled with here was the difference, how the difference in lighting draws attention to the tile, which we think is the intent for the negative space. Um, and also because of the sort of cracks in the tile. It, it, it's sort of too much detail in the negative space that keeps drawing the eye out of, away from the plug. I think there was, we also had to, I think the other part of it was that because the plug is something we see all the time. It doesn't, it just seems, seemed a little, um, common. And so it doesn't, your eye just doesn't stick with it. Um, so you know, again, thought it was a great photo. Uh, we just, it was, it was just that fitting with the, the theme that we weren't, we weren't quite sure about. So this was by Chris Oats. Called Kitchen. I don't know if he has a rebuttal. Oh, not really. Thanks for the comments. Yeah. So yeah, we, we really, again, really good example of use of negative space here. Uh, yeah, good use of color with the grass. Uh, the, the colors uniform to complement this and it complements that subject. Uh, you got that hint of the ball, uh, getting a little bit more. Um, yeah, ju- just a, a little bit of color to that. Uh, yeah, the, the, that detail in the grass or in the ground isn't enough to distract. Um, so coming back to, oh, I forgot, excuse me, what it was, the, the, one of the other dog ones where the dog is looking into the frame. In contrast, this would be here, the dog is looking out of the frame. And so that adds tension to, to the photo. Um, also that it's looking into the light, because you can see that with the shadow. And the other thing we thought was interesting, again, coming similar to Laurley's photo, that repetition of the repetitive pattern of the tail in the grass at the top. We kind of have a repeating pattern there. We thought really added to this. So this was by George Clayton. I don't know, George has some more comments.
No, very good. Thanks for the comments.
All right. And this is our final photo of the, for the theme. Um, so it seems here, the, the photographer took the theme of space, of negative space, the space aspect, a little more literally than others. Yeah, things we thought were interesting about it. Angle of the ship. So the ship, you're not looking at the ship, the spaceship head on, but there's an angle to it. Uh, unlike the other photos that we've seen, this is an example where the negative space is really below the subject. Uh, that, that's where you're finding it. So again, just a different example, use negative space. Uh, again, negative space supports the subject. That, that's what's keeping it up in the air there. And, uh, note that the bottom color gains, gives a depth to the photo. There's kind of a bit of an orangey, reddish glow on the bottom. Yeah. And this, yeah, and then this particular photo is actually mine. This is, yeah. I don't have any further comments about it.
How, how did you take this photo? Was it like hanging on something, the, the ship?
Yeah, um, it was actually, yeah, I've, I, over the last little while, my, where it started was one of my kids gave me a Lego Tie Fighter for Christmas. And I started hanging them up. I started hanging them with fishing line. And so, uh, yeah, I used Photoshop to just get the fishing line out of this, but it's taken against a white. I think it was a white piece of paper. Yeah.
And it's creative.
Yeah, I've been, um, I've been using it as kind of a subject to, to practice my Photoshop skills. With, yeah, so. Okay. So yeah, again, that's really, we really enjoyed the photos in the theme this month. They're really great, uh, great examples of the skill and creativity of the members in the club. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate what Laurley said at the start is, you know, come to the critique, you get a kind of a preview of all these before the meeting. You get to see them.
And more open conversation.
And more open conversations. That's.
Pretty much everything we said, you've, you've put through here, but it's just, just a little more relaxed atmosphere. Yeah, it's cool. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, John, for doing that. Any more questions for anybody? No. These meetings are always so quiet. Okay, we are going to move on to a being there segment by Doug. I believe Doug, you're there.
Uh, yes, I am.
And you can screen share.
Okay.
Make sure you turn on the sound when you get into that screen.
Yep. Following the, um, the architectural theme that we did, um, in January, I sort of got inspired to look at some of my, um, my, uh, library of photos and decided that I had lots of architecture pictures and, and, uh, so I settled on, uh, I'm trying to put something together, um, from a couple of trips, uh, two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. And so this is, um, this is what, this is the result. Uh, hope you enjoy it.
I'm guessing we're not gonna be able to see it because. We see your email. You need to click on the right screen. So exit out of screen sharing. And you need to start your show so that you can see it on the screen when you click on screen sharing.
Uh, then I can't click on screen sharing because it's on a full screen.
Well, put it not on full screen. And then once you get to screen sharing, you can put it on full screen.
Okay, I might have much luck here. I can't get back to the, um, to the zoom again.
It's not on the bottom. A little zoom thing.
Got it.
There we go.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. So, architecture of Scotland and England. So there'll be lots of churches and castles.
Steaming north on a stallion of fire. Up the Highland Highway of Steel. Over pogs and bridges and heathery ridges. Mountains supreme they seem serene. How strange to be in a foreign land. And feel more at home than I've ever been. Where the lightning flashes. And the thunder her rolls. I've come to claim my Celtic song.
Awesome. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome. It was fun to put together.
Yeah, I can see where you probably got lots to pull from there. Anybody else have comments for Doug?
Great pictures. I have a question. Does everybody else see a double, um. Gray rectangle at the top of the screen when another show is playing?
Yes. Do you guys?
Yeah, I've been seeing him coming on and off.
It's the.
I was seeing a black box in the center a few times.
Did it?
I have a question for Doug.
When you were playing?
Pardon me?
Show up on yours?
Uh, no, does not show up when you're playing, when you're, um, when you're showing it.
It's always on mine, but I, if Doug is playing, you shouldn't be seeing it because of me. It's, I don't know, we might have to look into, I think it's that whole, uh, menu that's up at the top where it says mute all and. And, uh, stuff, and we'll have to look into that. See how to get rid of that.
I I was seeing it during during some of the earlier shows, but not through, not through this one.
I have a feeling it has to do with everybody's computer themselves. Um, but we have to figure out, I'll see if I can figure out how to get rid of that. I thought I was the only one seeing it.
So Doug, I have a question for you. Were you putting those images up at a higher resolution? Like than what we submit for for the like theme images?
Um, I think when I, when I put my show together in Fotopia, I do not resize them. So they'd be full, full size.
So what's full size? A raw file?
Uh, no, they're JPG.
Okay.
JPG files, but they're not resized when I export them.
The show would be nineteen twenty by ten eighty, so.
They would still be?
Probably.
Okay, because to me, they looked, they were very sharp on my screen, whereas some shows don't come up that sharp. So, so does it make a difference if you're putting in a, uh? I don't know. I don't know why that difference is. What, does anybody know why the difference would be that I'm seeing that as sharper images?
I know when I, um, when I submit any pictures to the club for. Theme or for any, for whatever, I always downside, I always resize them. Um, but when I'm putting them on my own show, I, for some reason, I don't resize them.
Okay.
I don't know whether that, what the software that puts the slideshow together does with it.
And you said it's called Fotopia?
Fotopia is the one, it's the, um. It's brand new. I just got it. And this is the first show I put together with it. Uh, it's, it's the, um, it's the, the one that took over from Proshow.
Okay.
So it's a subscription version and so far I'm I'm liking it. I put. Uh, I put two shows together, uh, since Christmas.
I'm wondering if it has something to do with the person's bandwidth that. That's like showing the show. It's like Doug, yours was like really clear and really smooth transitions and stuff. But for example, mine, when Laura Lee showed it, was really glitchy and not that good quality. So I'm just wondering if it's it's the bandwidth.
Well, I thought, I I didn't, I I thought yours was, um. Um, was was good, except for the 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 square gray box that kept showing up once in a while.
You know, that, that's, you're, you're talking about a gray box, yeah, for during Judy's, it was right dead center of the screen, correct?
Right.
Whereas Doug, with yours, it was two rectangular bars at the very top for the entire show.
Okay, that might have been something I did, because when I, when I started it up, there was, there was stuff up there and I couldn't seem to get rid of it. It was on on my screen.
Okay.
Right at the top, um. The the top menu was up and I couldn't get rid of it. And I didn't want to do too much without, because I thought I might, um. Um, you know, shut the show down or something.
So did you make it turn, did you turn it gray then?
No, I did not. I didn't do anything with it.
Okay.
So whatever, whatever resolution the show is in. Uh, Zoom re- resizes it to twelve eighty by seven twenty, so. It's always downs- downscaled.
Ah, so if you actually used images. Sm- uh, smaller, would they look, would they maybe load faster? Is that, does it, does Zoom take time? Is is the Zoom, is Zoom taking time to like?
Reprocess?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because I'm thinking maybe if you're using a smaller image, it won't be reprocessing and it'll just come up quicker or maybe clearer. I'm not sure. Do, do, do you know, Chris?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I think perhaps I might have been checking the chat when her. Show was playing and that might have been the square box in the middle that popped up. Would anybody, would you guys like to see her show again? Without.
Actually, that makes sense, Laura Lee, because if what Mike's saying, he saw a gray box where I had. There was something else on my screen. There was a menu on my screen. And that's where the gray box showed up. So it was probably the gray box was showing up whenever you opened the chat.
Yeah. Can I, can I play her show again so that we can?
I wanna, I haven't asked my question of Doug yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm waiting to get all this technical stuff out of the way.
You're very patient, uh, George.
So that was pretty impressive show and and images and, uh. Usually in architecture, you got all these lines and. And, uh, that converge and stuff and none of you had. Very little of that in your show. So did you shoot them that way or did you have to do a lot of? Processing, uh, with the transform tool in Lightroom or?
I I did, I did some, some of that in Lightroom, um, with transform. Um, and really, I, I I learned a little bit more about it recently, so I was experimenting with some of that. So. I mean, some of those, all those pictures were taken a few years ago, like I said, eighteen and nineteen. And, um, I was able to go in and and actually improve them from what I had done back then. And it was all done in Lightroom Transform.
Anyway, you did a five minutes job of fixing them or whatever. They were super.
Great. Very nice images.
Thank you.
I enjoyed it a lot because I've been to many of those places, Doug, and they bring back good memories.
So I'm gonna play Judy's show again. Without getting the in-between, because it's not fair to her to have me interrupt her show. So I am also gonna stop my video before I go on. And I think I can go ahead. So the ones on top, I don't know.
Yeah, they're still there.
Still there.
It goes great. Oh, there we go. Okay, they're gone.
One's gone.
Gone?
One's gone, yeah.
Just a little bars up there right now?
Uh, yeah, just the bar that says you're viewing Laura Lee's screen.
Well, we'll play it, but I won't, I won't interrupt it with chats.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, partway through there, I realized I didn't put it on. Yeah, I didn't put it on full screen. So you should have noticed a point where you didn't see the boxes at the top anymore, right?
I didn't see any boxes.
No. At first, at first it went away and then somebody put something in the chat, so it came up again. So I was assuming, um. That you would have seen the boxes, but then I also noticed I didn't have it on full screen. And when I put it on full screen, everything else left my screen. So I'm assuming that were no more boxes. So. That's what we need to do if we can. It's awesome. Thank you, Judy. I don't know, it played really smooth here. Did everybody find it was smooth or jumpy or?
For me.
Pardon me, Judy?
The second time I thought it played smoother, so.
It played sm- I thought it played smooth on mine.
Yep, that was great.
Okay, awesome. Then, oops, we will move on to, uh, Chris, I think, with our field trip show. I think we have, uh, one star in this field trip show, right, Chris?
One star? What do you mean?
One star. One, uh, well, one repeated. Subject.
More or less, yeah.
You didn't notice?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. This is for the Helen Schuler field trip. Okay, yeah, go ahead. This is for the Helen Schuler field trip.
Were there any black bars or anything on that?
No, it looked good.
I didn't see any.
I could see the green thing on top, though, because nobody else?
Yeah, no, the green thing. I thought that's just always there.
Okay.
I saw the menu bar, like your video mute and start. I saw that bar up at the top.
Yeah, the the menu bar was there.
I don't know how you get rid of that.
Was that showing full screen? It didn't look like it was on the, on the bottom, right?
Yeah, it was full screen.
Okay.
Very nice pictures, though, everyone.
Really beautiful.
It was a little tickety that I said was the star of the show because when I looked at the pictures, I think just about everybody sent in a picture of it. Very cool. Thank you, guys, and thank you for going out on the field trips and thank you, Cigarette, for arranging the field trips again all the time. So, George, what time is it? Well, you've got lots of time, George. So George is going to do an ad segment on Lightroom collections. He finds them while. So you can take over, George. You can stick over the screen or just talk right now for a while.
You're muted, George.
It's best sometimes. I just uh talked for a minute or two, Lauralee, and then I'll, I'll just share my screen, so. I was um going through my Lightroom catalog and looking for pictures for PhotoFusion. And um. I thought that uh, oh. This is a be a good topic for people that are putting stuff together. I don't know how people are are getting, capturing their images. Eventually getting, getting them into a slideshow, but uh. I think collections is like a really good way to do that and uh. So I just asked Lauralee if there was time on the, on the busy agenda by. If I could just give a demonstration of making a collection and uh, so I don't know how many of you. I'm sure there's many on this call that know how to do a collection, but I'm sure there's some that aren't, so. I will just demonstrate that and uh. And uh, and then you can, if you have any questions. So it's good for PhotoFusion, but it's also good for other things, for family albums or. That you want to share with somebody and things, so anyways, here I go, I'll share my screen. I don't have a video clip, so I don't need to. I better check it just in case. Ooh, ugly. Okay, so I'm just gonna click on it. Here's my Lightroom. Catalog. So I've already done some pre, pre-work on this, so I've key worded a bunch of uh. Things. My theme for PhotoFusion is gonna be uh H2O. Water. And um.
I'm sorry for my jewelry design business.
What's that? Anyways, I key worded, uh, if you'll notice, I key worded, uh, well, that's one I just took yesterday. I'm gonna go, I, I put PhotoFusion in for every photo I wanted to consider. Putting in my, in my slideshow, so. I've got five years selected here, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two. I've uh gone through, so you can see. Uh, some of them. Uh, I've gotten keyworded and I put PhotoFusion twenty twenty-two in there. So. I got uh a hundred and forty-nine pictures here. That I've sort of selected and uh. This is my favorite one that has water. But uh, if uh. I can star them or I can do other things. What I can't do, though, is I can't move this picture. And so I want to go here and I want to sort of search them. If I try to move that picture, whoop. If I try to move it up. It won't let me. It cannot reorder photos, so I can reorder photos on a particular day or in a folder. But if I'm going, I cannot uh. I cannot move pictures through multiple folders, so. So that's the problem with uh, with, with this, so. The easy way to get around that is to actually create a. Uh, a collection, so I don't want so many pictures in my collection, so. I'm gonna go to five star. Oh, and I think I flagged. Oh, this is good, you know. So there's, so let's say that these are the pictures I want in my PhotoFusion slideshow. I will go up to the top here, if you can all see. This, you got your Lightroom classic file edit. I will go to, oh, let me just pick one here before I do that one. I will just go to, pick that one. And I'll go to a library. And I will hit new collection. And it will ask me a collection name, so I'm gonna call it um. PhotoFusion twenty twenty-two. I'm gonna include the selected photo. I only got one selected here, but I'm gonna set that as the target. And. I will create. So. It created. I'm almost embarrassed. I've never actually deleted a collection. So I got way too many collections in here and I. Doing this, I realized that I need to uh. Clean up a lot of this crap because I don't need them anymore. Anyways, it automatically goes in under these collections here. And uh, it's got one photo in there. And that's the photo we had selected, so if I want to get more in there. I could have got more in at the beginning. If I would have selected all of them, they would have all come in. But I only did one because I want to go back and um. Here's the problem. You gotta go back and do everything all over again. So go there, go to my text. That stupid thing is, there we go. What are my texts? I got PhotoFusion. I went to five stars. Uh, so the way you can get more in there, let's say I didn't want all of these. I wanted some of them, so I like this one. You just hit B. Now, if you watch the screen, you'll see some words come up. B says add to target collection. PhotoFusion. I like Pedro Lake and Bamp, so I'm gonna hit B again. I like uh this beer. I'm gonna hit B there. I like uh Wally's Beach. So I'm gonna hit B there. I like that little field trip we went on to. Uh, this is that waterfall on that little trail and is it Coleman? I can't remember. I hit B, so I added that. I like my Cameron Falls. I'm gonna hit B. I like my Lumbergh Falls. I'm gonna hit B. And I like my Cameron Creek, so I'm gonna hit B. And uh. Okay, so that's, well, let's say that's all the ones I want in there. So I just can go back to my collections now. Which is here. You can see now I got nine pictures in that collection. So there they are. Now, they came from all different folders, right? So I can just move that one over there. Move that one over there. I want my beer to be the last thing I show. So I now I can order and sort of develop my, my slide, my slideshow and. In collections and I can order them. And I can edit them if I want to develop them anymore. I can develop them. And uh, I can uh turn down the highlights, increase exposure. I can do whatever. And um. What happens is it uh, this isn't even a copy. It's just the same picture that's up in your library. So all the edits I made in here on develop will appear when you go back up to that picture. In your normal library. And uh, the other thing I can do here is, let's say I don't want that picture anymore. I hit B again when I'm in my collection. And whoops, it went too fast. It removed it from that collection. Uh, it didn't remove it from, from uh my library. And I could have hit delete. So let's say I want to delete Pedro Lake. I hit delete and it just takes it out of here. So now I'm down to seven, but. Uh, anyways, you can do a lot of things in here and you can get it all organized. And then you can um. You can go and you can export them. You can put them into a folder for PhotoFusion and uh. I'm gonna put it into iMovie, so while it actually won't resize, I'll keep them, I'll keep them uh full size. I don't want to do anything right now, so. Anyways, once you get your final show done in your collection, it's easier to just export them and then take them to uh. Uh Utopia or iMovie or whatever, but I'm gonna go back up here. Just to finish this off, just to show you that um. Go to my text for the fusion, go to five stars and uh. All my pictures are still there, so I, in the collection, I deleted uh. I deleted this picture. I deleted a couple other ones, if I remember this one. And um, but they're all still here. Which one did I edit? I edited this one. So. That one came from Photoshop, so I didn't have any edits on it when they, before I started this. But if you look now. All those edits I made previously. Uh, were there. I don't really want to edit it, so I'm gonna reset it. So you can do that. The other thing is you can delete. In the collection. But if you try to delete here. Let's say I want to delete these and I hit my delete button. It says remove three photos from Lightroom catalog. Uh, I don't ever remove from Lightroom catalog. If I want them deleted, I delete from disk. Just to get rid of them because I'm using Lightroom to manage my whole library. But I don't want to do that here. So you just got to be careful. You can't, you can delete in collections. You can't delete here unless you really want to delete them. Okay, any other points I want to make? I think that's good, so. Has anybody got any questions or?
George, can you just go back to the actual screen you were on? Uh, because I do have a question for you about that.
Okay, I gotta go back and share my screen again. No problem. No problem. Uh, I'm gonna share my desktop. Uh, get Lightroom backup.
Okay, so the question is, you had said earlier that your collections, uh, you're gonna have to go in and clean them up sometime. So if you just take, and I'm not asking you to open any of them, but if you just were to say. Okay, you've got the egg shapes right underneath your cursor there. So if you wanted to, if you just, if you're gonna um. Get rid of that one, they, they still all just go back into your general catalog. Is that correct?
That's correct. You're not getting rid of them from your catalog. You're just getting rid of that collection.
So you can just close the collection and you don't have to think about it again.
So I'm not gonna, I'm gonna delete it, so on um. I hit Control and uh egg shapes and this comes up and I'll just hit. Delete. And it says delete the collection adscapes and I go yes, delete. So it's gone from here, but all those pictures are still up in my.
Your full catalog.
That's right. You can't delete any pictures, I mean, any images in collections from your catalog. You can add to it, you can add pictures to the. In collections from your catalog. You can add to it, you can add pictures to the collection. You can, you can develop them, which those new development settings. Will apply to the picture in your library. And, uh. You can delete them in, in the collection, and they'll still remain in your library. Uh, or you can delete whole collections, because you don't want them anymore, and, uh. I got a lot here, I've never deleted one, so.
Uh, you can't say that anymore, I just watched you do it.
Well, I'm gonna delete a lot more, because a lot of them I don't need anymore. Oh, just the other thing I wanna, actually, there is one more thing. So let's say this was my final thing and, uh, for photo fusion, I'm gonna save them as, uh. As TIF files or high-res JPG files. But if you were just doing this, let's say you wanted to share a bunch of images with a family member. You just have to go to slideshow. So I'll click on slideshow and, uh. I, you can come down on the, on the bottom left-hand corner. It's got export video or export PDF. If I hit export PDF, I can name it. Uh, I can tell it where I wanna save it to. And, uh, I usually save it about sixteen hundred by twelve hundred. You can go lower res if you got a lot of pictures. And export it, and, uh, and then I just share that with, uh, people through email. Because generally it's smaller than, um. Than, uh, twenty megabytes and, uh, and they have a PDF file that they can scroll through, uh. Your pictures, here, I'll just do one, I'll just, uh. I wanna, I'll just save this to, oh, my desktop is pretty messy too. Untitled, um. I'll just do a test. With Bridge Photo Club. Okay, I'll, I'll export, so you can see up on the top here, it's sporting to a PDF. Okay, where did it, uh, here it is. Open. So it opened up my PDF file, it's got pictures one to seven. I just have to, uh, scroll through the pages and all my pictures there, and they're pretty high quality.
Yeah.
But for photo fusion, don't do that, just if you wanna share, so for photo fusion. You save them as high, high-quality JPGs or whatever, and then stick them in your program. And then, in your program, if you made, if you think, well, I want this picture to go over there, you only have to do one or two. As opposed to bring all your pictures into that program and try to figure out what the slideshow is. Um, so it's, it just makes things a little simpler and easier, so. Uh, any other questions?
No, but thank you for showing what you've shown, that, for me, that really helps, thanks.
Comment, George, um, uh, I, I act, just, just, um. Expanding on what you, on what you're talking about there, my, my, uh, process typically is, uh. Rather than keyword, I would, if I'm looking to put together pictures for a project, whether it's slideshow or something. I typically will go through my, my, my. Uh, catalog or whatever, um, topic, if I have topics keyworded. Or if I have a, a year, if I wanna go through a year and pick out, uh, some of my best pictures for, for a project. I'll just put them all directly and I, I set up a, a full, uh, collection. And as I'm going through, I just keep adding pictures to the collection, I may end up with, uh. With sixty or seventy or a hundred pictures, and then I go there and start sorting. And deciding, do I really want this? And then I just, I, I pare it down from there and just, uh, delete. Delete pictures from the collection until I end up with my final slideshow.
Yeah, no, that would work too, Doug, I mean.
I find it very helpful, the, the, uh, the collections.
Yeah, I know, and that, uh, they're great, just don't keep them around forever. But in my photo library, I got, uh. A hundred and twenty-three thousand pictures, so I keyword a lot, so. I was gonna do one on H2O, so I, I, uh, key, I, I, I put text in and I. Asked for pictures on water, lakes, rivers, waterfalls, and, uh, brought them up, and then I just. Put them in a collection, so. Um. So I can go back and capture it, uh, but either way, you can do it, uh. That process works for you and it's, it's, uh, it's no problem.
Don't you ever find Lightroom gets bogged down by all the data and the RAM or whatever you're using? To try to load up all these fixtures all the time?
Um, no.
Hmm, I do, actually, and then maybe it's my computer, I don't know, but I never store. Collections, like when I may do a session, I bring it in, edit it, send it out. And it comes, the collection is gone, like I don't keep a lot of pictures in my old pictures file. I'm lucky if I have five thousand in there and I see you have like twelve thousand. But I find even that, like if I don't use Lightroom two days in a row and I open it back up, it just bogs down, I actually have to shut it down and reload it again.
Okay, so. That may be a different problem, because collections actually are, you're not moving anything. You're just pointing to something.
Um, I, I think she's referring to your full, your total library size.
Yeah, well, I also got sixty-four gigabyte of RAM, so. Um.
That's, that's the difference.
If, um. If you got eight gigabytes to have that many. Might bug you down or whatever.
Yes, I don't know how much I have, but.
I just think, oh, I just increased the RAM on, uh. On, um, my old iMac that I don't have anymore from. I think I had sixteen, I increased it to sixty-four, and then when I bought this new laptop, uh. Just a few months ago, I, I, uh, I bought it with sixty-four. Uh. Gigabytes of RAM, so RAM will actually solve a lot of your problems.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I have another question. So you said that you were gonna start your, um, uh, show with a hundred and forty-nine images.
That's what I put into my collection, then I'm gonna do exactly what Doug said, I'll just, uh. Go through, I'll rearrange them, I'll edit them, I'll say no, I don't want this and that, so I will figure out my song. That I'm gonna put, or the music, figure out how long that is, try to estimate, uh. I like to keep my images up for about seven seconds.
Okay.
And, uh, I'll figure out approximately how many images I need. And then, uh, I will work towards that, so I got a hundred and forty-nine, if I can only. Have like fifty images, Mike, I will try to cut down to fifty and, uh. But I can do my whole slideshow in the collection, and once I'm satisfied. Then I just save them as JPGs and then move them to whatever, while I, I use iMovie, so. I would move them into iMovie from there, instead of just putting a bunch of random pictures in iMovie and then trying to move them around. It's much more difficult, so.
I have found, George, that with, um, uh, with Pro Show and, and probably the same thing with, with, uh, the one. The new one I'm using, uh, I can do all the sorting I want in collections, but when I export it and it go, and I, uh. Bring them into that other program, they're all in random order again.
Oh. Well.
Well, I say random, it might be, and it, it might be by date, I'm not sure what order it's in, but it's not the order that I wanted them originally, so.
Okay, but if you've done it in, just to sort of rebut that, and, and, and so I'm not saying that that's not true. I'm saying that that's probably gonna happen even for me in iMovie, because. Uh, things, but if I've organized everything and I actually understand my show in the collection.
Right.
Then I know what order I want them in, and, uh, so if they're out of order when I, when you bring them into your other thing. You can, you've already done that pre-work and then you can just try to remember what order they went in and.
Right.
But you renamed them on your export, no?
No, I just name them, uh, one thing and then just let them go from number one to forty-nine or whatever.
Pro, in Pro Show, it'll put them in, uh, like numerical order, unless, unless you renamed them or something. Well, yeah, it'll put them in order.
So you have to, you have to name them properly then.
Yeah.
The only thing is I don't.
I started working on mine, so I'll name it like. Like leverage one, leverage two, or, you know, so they kind of come in in, in the order I want them.
Okay.
Now, when I save these, this first one will be, uh, let's, uh, let's just say I call it, uh. Photo Fusion. Uh, it'll, this first, this image will be one. That image will be, uh, that'll be photo fusion one, photo few, actually, there's, and it doesn't start with one, that'll be photo fusion. That'll be photo fusion two, that'll be photo fusion three, photo fusion four, photo fusion five. What if you're in six, photo fusion seven? And then generally what I've been doing recently is going back and just renaming the first one and adding the one. So that it stays in order, because usually it ends up at the ba- at the back end, there's a, as opposed to the top end. Okay, is anybody scared to do this?
Thanks, George.
Anybody afraid to do it?
I don't think so.
If you are, just send me an email and I'll. Try to walk us through it, if you're having difficulty. Okay, I'll stop sharing my screen again.
Awesome, thank you, George, that was helpful, it sounds like to a lot of people. Uh, so I think that's the end of our meeting, right on time, pretty much, I just wanna remind everybody about the, um, webinar on Saturday. For Freeman Patterson at nine o'clock, register sometime by tomorrow if you haven't registered yet. Um, I think we have like sixteen people or seventeen people of our club there, and the rest of the hundred and seven come from the alliance. So it'd be nice to have a few more people of our club join in, um. I think that's all, and then what?
I got one more thing to, to say. Uh, in regards to photo fusion.
Yep.
Uh, I have been asked by the club to emcee photo fusion for this year. So, uh, whoever is doing a show. Can you please send me a little blurb about what it is about? You know, two or three lines, so I can say something during the evening about your show. So I just. Send my, uh, email address in the, uh, chat box there, so.
And I can send out an email with that info and on there too, so.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. Great, you're gonna be a great emcee, Byron. I'll try. Go Canada.
Uh, Laura Lee, can we, uh, submit, uh, photo fusion shows anytime now?
Yeah, you can, if you are ready, so yeah, if they're ready, you can, uh, submit them.
All right.
We will probably just have one day by the looks of it, unless a whole bunch of people pull up at the last minute. Um.
When, when's the deadline, it's the end of the month, right?
Supposed to be the end of the month, yeah.
Okay.
There might be a little bit of leeway if everything's going really smoothly.
Okay.
But, um, basically the end of the month, not, not too many days past that, because it is on a date or whatever.
So are we short of shows, Laura Lee?
I don't know, Ralph, are you still there? He always seems to put the shows together for me for a while, the last few years, I can't remember how many shows, so we have got, um.
You know, last email you said we were kinda short to have, fill up the evening, did you get more people respond to you and?
We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. So that's getting close, I think, to.
Laura, Laura, Laura Lee, I haven't responded yet, I actually do wanna do a show, but I'm gonna need help.
Okay, I think, I thought you were on there, but maybe not.
But my recollection, I could be wrong, Laura Lee, is that, uh, when, the last time we did the show, um. In person a few years ago, I believe we had. We may have had fourteen shows per night, and that was, um, pretty full.
Yeah, I was gonna say fourteen or sixteen, kinda rings a bell, so.
I could, I could be wrong, I, I, it's sort of what I remember.
Yeah, I think we were pretty much in that fourteen to sixteen. Shows per night range.
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're pretty good, um, like I said, when I put out the last call, I did, did, did get a few more, um. Yeah, I think we should be okay. Yeah, you're not on the list, Mike, so, if you show that would be wonderful.
Will you help me?
I will.
Okay.
Laura Lee, we might, uh, should we do a test of the chat function?
Yep. Um, so yeah, we'll, uh, say good night to everybody else, if you don't wanna hang in, um, because Chris is going to be hosting the. The webinar on Saturday, so we kinda need to test out some things here.
Okay.
Try to test it out here, so the meeting's over, if you like, unless you've got any more questions or.
Uh, Laura Lee, did I just hear you say we have to go and register for the Freeman Patterson one?
Yes. There should be an email, but I can send it out to you, I can look for it and send it to you again.
I'm sure I might have just not seen it, but, uh, I'll let, I'll let you know, okay?
Okay, I can check the list too, to see if you're on there, but, um, it was a jot form that. It was a jot form thing that you had to fill out?
No, I didn't, then, okay.
Is that familiar? Okay.
If, if we did register, did we get a re- um, uh, um, uh, an email back saying we were, or? How do we know if, if we have been registered?
I guess not, but I could do that tonight, he's been sending me, like I said, we've, um. Cause we're doing this through the Edmonton Club, so he went and set up this jot form right away, told me it would be easier to do it this way, so I said, okay. Um, and it's his, uh, Zoom that we're registering through, so that we can get more than a hundred people there. Um, so that's kinda why we're, you need to check out this chat, because there's a few things we're not sure about. Because, uh, Freeman Patterson doesn't want the chat coming up during the meeting. Um, but he has been sending me a list, um, dot form can e- e- export a list of who all is registered. And I can check that list and I can, um, get it sent out to you guys, just to confirm that you are on there. So I'll send, I'll send the list to everybody, so that if you're not on the list, um, then you'll know.
Thanks, Laura Lee.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Pretty sure the, um, the admin, whoever has admin prop privileges on the Zoom can like, uh, pause the chat. Cause I've had that on other webinars.
From, from what I've gathered, it has to be, but Chris and I'll try it, but what I looked at, it almost sounds like it needs to be the person whose. Zoom it is, so I think it is the Edmonton Club that needs to.
Yeah, whoever has the administrator, um.
Yeah. Cause I, I did find a screen where you turned it off, but we were gonna try to see if we could figure it out, if, if the host could do it. Instead of putting that on, we kind of, it kinda sounded like you didn't wanna do it on his part, but, but if he has you, then he probably will. Like the Edmonton guy, so we'll see how it goes.
And can I ask, uh, one quick question about photo fusion? Did you say it was gonna be broadcast, um, live on YouTube or recorded and played back later?
Both. It will be live that night.
It won't be on YouTube.
It won't be.
Sorry, it, it won't?
What, weren't we gonna do it on a, a private link?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, what, what are we talking about?
Photo Fusion.
Yeah, that'll be, uh, live on YouTube.
Yeah.
It will be.
It'll be live on YouTube and YouTube automatically records everything, so then we will be loading it up to our site afterwards. Yeah, it will be. It'll be live on YouTube and YouTube automatically records everything, so then we will be loading it up to our site afterwards also.
Okay.
Using, for the webinar, um, he, uh, we are recording it, but it's only gonna be available to. For a couple of weeks and then we have to destroy it, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's why he was getting confused there a little bit. The photo fusion for sure will be on YouTube if everything works, right?
It will.
Yep, I know, he's done it a lot. But he's done it a lot.
Have you done it before? Because I thought you had to have a certain number of, um. Subscribers or something to do that.
Uh, we haven't tested it on our account yet, but I will.
Yeah.
You don't need subscribers, you just need verified status.
Okay.
How do you get that?
Just by, uh, asking for it.
Oh, okay. Well, only that all up to you. I just wasn't sure how it was gonna work this. Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll test it this week.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Chris does it a lot, so, um, he'll know where to look. I'll get that figured out. Anything else, you guys? If not, I'll let you go and I'll talk to Chris.
Thank you.
Mate, thanks.
Okay, thanks everyone, bye.
So what are we gonna do? I'm gonna try to hand over the host to you.
Yeah, I guess so.
Up to where I do that. Okay, so in the chat, I can make you a host, so I'm going to do that right now. You want to change the host to Chris, yes?
Okay, and.
Oh, I'm gonna.
I can turn off chats.